It's 5:30. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the agenda? And do you have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
I have and I don't.
I have and I don't have any modifications.
With that, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item two, common consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the common consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item three, public hearings. At this time, I'll open a public hearing for 609 West Myrtle. Don?
We moved too fast. Let's accuse him of stepping out for a smoke. Come on, let's do it. Don, we missed you, man.
Sorry, I got my son going from Western Kansas to Colorado.
609 West Myrtle.
This is one that has been in a fire. Significant damage up in the ceiling area and first floor and smoke damage inside. So it is our recommendation that we proceed with condemnation. You know, hopefully the owner wants to repair or sell it to somebody that's interested in repairing it. I did get an inquiry about somebody maybe wanting to buy it to repair it. But it is vacant at the time right now. So it is our -- it is staff's recommendation that we proceed with condemnation at this point to try to move forward with this property.
Okay. Property owner, are they present? Would you like to address?
The other owner's here. Did you write them?
Come on up. If you would state your name for the record, please.
Allison Os minor. And I have it under contract of a lady that's going to purchase it and repair it. I have it right here in this folder.
Okay. If you'll have a seat up front, then I'll open it up to any public that want to address the public hearing on this property. And if not, then I'll close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. So have you visited with them about the potential sale of the property?
No, this is the first time I had -- somebody had contacted me about maybe buying it. But they wanted to put a camper on there and we were kind of going over whether or not you could put a camper on there to live in while it was being repaired. So there was no discussions after that. So this, I don't know anything about the contract or anything about that. This is the first I know of that.
Would you come back to the podium and now explain to the commission that you have sold the house?
Yes, it's under contract. I've sold it. The lady is coming out. She's already given me a deposit. She's going to fix it up. And her and her daughter are going to move out to it and live in it. And I have a contract from her and everything.
Okay, were they aware that there was a public hearing?
Yes.
For condemning?
I told them everything.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think what we need to make the building inspector, Mr. Cushing, aware of the individual that's wanting to purchase it and remodel it so that they can find out what the process will be to make that happen.
So do I just give him a copy, make a copy of this contract and give it to him?
Don?
Well, we would like to meet with you and kind of go over the situation, who's buying it, what the contract is. And then we can talk with the potential new owner about what's going to be required to repair the house.
Because I've told the lady it needs a total, she plans on tearing it down and building it back up all the way because it was, you know, told a total rehab.
We'll need to go over what's required to do that.
Okay.
What she'll need, permits that she'll need to get to do that.
And when do you got to meet with me?
Well, we could meet next week and go over this.
Okay, because she's actually in California. So she's two hours behind us.
Okay, we could visit with her by phone if I could get that information for you.
Was the damage significant structural or was it?
There's some structural damage, a lot of smoke damage, water damage, electric. Appears to be an electrical fire. So there'll be some structural repairs. Fire, there was quite a bit of fire damage to structure and to the wiring and smoke throughout and water damage as well, so.
From the pictures, it's hard to tell the significance of the damage.
The second picture, the second and the fourth picture, you can see where the smoke damages. You can see where there's smoke damage to portions of the roof on a couple of those pictures in the back. Right above the door there, you can see where smoke has come out and there was some damage to the roof and framing around that area. So there will be some repairs.
But nothing extensive?
Not extensive, if somebody has.
10%?
I'd say probably about 30%, 30 to 40%.
Structural damage.
Yeah, about 30%. When you get in to tear out, you always, on remodels, you always tear out more than is actually damaged to get to the, to get to the damage that's affected.
Questions? So our normal procedure would be tonight to go ahead, based on the recommendation, is to proceed with condemnation. Within that framework, you have 30 days to commence repairs.
Showing that it's going to be starting repairs?
Yeah, so she'll have, she'll have up to 12 months to repair this.
Okay.
And it's critical that Don stay informed in the communication, go to see that work's being done. So any other questions?
No.
If there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that 609 West Myrtle Street be condemned as dangerous and unsafe.
Do I have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
You got my number. Can you call another, we can set an appointment. Okay.
Do I have to stay?
No, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. Yeah. If you want to, you can.
Thank you.
The next property, I'll open the public hearing for 301 North 11th.
Yes, this is, this is another one that has fire damage to it, mainly to an upstairs bedroom. The concern with this one is fire damage and it's vacant at the time. So we kind of want to help people to get these things repaired after they had fire damage and not just let them sit vacant. I have been contacted, there is a new owner and she is here tonight and would like to address the commission as well.
Okay. So property owner, would you like to?
Hi, I'm sorry, but my English is very little, but I come in because my house is fixed. And this week, and maybe start for roofing. And next week, or two weeks more, maybe electricity for one room because only one room is no good for electricity, yeah.
So you have began work on the, on the property?
Sorry, one more time?
You've begun, you've already started the work?
Yeah, I started the work in this week for roofing. Next week, sorry, excuse my English. And two weeks and fix the electricity.
Okay.
Yeah, start. But in the next week is for an out for the house and roofing is okay.
Well, if you could hold on a moment, we'll entertain any of the public. Any citizens want to address the commission regarding 301 North 11th? If there aren't, then I'll close the public hearing. Now open for commission discussion. I kind of jumped the gun there. Commissioners?
When did you say you bought the house?
One more time?
When did you buy the house?
When did you purchase the house?
Oh, when I, in one month, one month.
A month ago?
Yeah.
So you have no concerns about your ability to get it repaired to current standards?
Yes, I'm prepared, but in the, in the, in this house, no people, nothing. I have our house.
I understand.
Sorry, because my English is?
That's okay. My English isn't so good either. You're good.
So the fire was really confined to one room?
There's not, there's not major fire damage in this structure, no. It's not extensive, so.
So we're dealing mainly with cosmetics?
There were some other items that needed to be done prior to this fire, but I think they can all be addressed at this time. I think with her buying the house, they can all be addressed.
So with work in the process of being completed and she's already started, have they made contact with you initially?
She made contact with, I've been on vacation four weeks. So the day before I went on vacation, she contacted one of the ladies in the water department to let her know that she had bought the property. So Jessica, who speaks Spanish. So Jessica informed me. So I knew before I went on vacation that we had a new owner, but I didn't know anything beyond that.
So Don, since this obvious isn't unsafe, it's secured and it's in the process of being modeled, would you?
So I don't have any problem, I don't have any problem tabling this one for 30 days or, and then we can address how we've done. I think she's expressed interest, if I understand, that in the next month, she's really going to work to get this done, so.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Beautiful house.
Yeah, so. So we just need to adjourn for, adjourn for 30 days?
Or more, 60 days.
60 days.
Yeah, why don't we do 60? That's except.
The last meeting of February.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
So if you could call Jessica tomorrow?
For adjourned a public hearing, we should probably have a motion. Yeah, okay. So do I have a motion regarding this property?
I'll move, go, you go.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing for 301 North 11th and set this up for the last meeting of February of 2019.
I'll second.
Which would be, what date would that be? February 22nd, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item on the agenda for commission action is consider authorizing city staff to set the date to receive bids for the removal of 419 South Second, 804 West Main Street, 1320 West Locust Street, 725 North Pennsylvania Avenue, and 520 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Did we want to go through these individually or?
I have pictures of each one of them.
Do you have the pictures?
Yes.
You just want to, you don't need to?
That's 419 South Second.
That one I've looked at.
804 West Main.
And that detached garage has been taken out. That's the one that was leaning heavily.
So, right here.
One of many.
Yep.
But it was a house also, was it?
The house also, yes.
This is 1320 West Locust. 729, or 725 North Penn. And 520 South Penn.
So you want to, if I understand, you want to go ahead and set a bid date for these properties?
Yes.
That you're going to have one package with these properties?
Yeah, so the ones that we discussed last month, put the, put these with the ones that we discussed last month and bring that to you in the January meeting.
An actual bid?
The actual, yeah, the actual removal, the demolition bid.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes, you know, when we're looking at five properties, that's a nice bid package. Sometimes we wait too long.
Yep.
We have some issues after we've condemned them and got them approved for bidding that they sit around.
Yep, I agree.
Commissioners, questions?
None for me. No, I've looked at all these houses myself and, and they've finally come around to be ready to be removed, so I don't have any questions.
If there's no further discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to seek bids for the removal of 419 South Second Street, 804 West Main Street, 1320 West Locust Street, 725 North Pennsylvania Avenue, and 520 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consider bids received on December 13th, 2018 for water treatment plant electrical improvements. Okay.
Okay.
Mike first, my, I had requested a scope of work as we kind of generally talked, but the items were not outlined to us recently. Generally, I don't remember, if you guys got the email, it includes a design of relocating the primary electrical feed, replacement of the filter building, MCC and panel boards, plant control system replacement, remote site control system replacement, new fiber optics cable to high service pump station, and also a standby generator. You might want to cover a little bit on your bid tab with the four bids. It said the low bid was not accepted. Was, there some issues with them?
There was three bids and the low bidder did not include or excluded some requirements in the, in the bid pack that were pointed out in the bid package. And they excluded those.
So that was Decker Electric?
That was Decker Electric.
So they did submit a bid, but it wasn't an incomplete scope of work?
It was an incomplete scope of work, yes. So PEC in reviewing those and when we reviewed the bids, they recommended not to accept their, or to disqualify their bid, is not acceptable.
And this project had Davis Bacon Wage Determination, is that because of the?
It's because of the overall, the state loan.
The state loan, that federal money? Okay, that boosts our cost a little bit. What was the engineer's estimate?
1.5 million.
So with our approval, then they'll be issuing a contract for us?
Yes.
PEC will issue the contract?
Yes.
Questions?
I'm ecstatic. This is something way overdue. We've been limping along out there for years and years, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that the bid was way under what the engineer's estimate was of $1,590,000 that came in over, what's that, $373,000 under what the estimate was, so. And we finally move on it and make some much-needed repairs that have dragged on and not been completed for years, more years than that can count.
Now, you know, once you issue the contract, that's when you're going to have problems with the main service entrance.
Well, we'll have a lot of persons on site, so.
You get this close, but you're still so far away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other good thing about this, with West Star making their improvements, it gets that feed out of the, out of the flooded area and it moves it up to the top.
Moves it up to the top.
So it helps them in that point and should help them provide a more reliable, stable service to the water facility now than what they've had for years. So that's, that's another win for us, too, so.
Yeah.
Besides the service entrance, the main distribution panels, your other remote controls, weren't you kind of on a prayer with those working, too? That there's some issues of availability of parts?
There's been some issues and we were looking at doing some of these upgrades anyway. So we tied it all back into this. We, matter of fact, just had one of our radios go down and one of the tires the other day, so there's, there's issues.
Good. And the generator, it's large enough to operate the entire plant?
Entire facility, yes.
Okay, good.
What's the timeline on this from, from start to finish? Have they given the timeline?
This is Nicole from PEC.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well.
I don't have a timeline in front of me, so.
Yeah.
Hi, Nicole.
Sarah briefed me before I came, so.
I guess these questions should have been addressed to you.
Oh, yeah, he did a good job.
You just wanted to put Terry on the spot.
So once we, we sent you guys a notice of award as part of the packet, it's included in that, since we get that signed back, we'll include that with the contract documents, send it to the contractor in the last 15 days to return everything, the insurance, the bonds, everything. And then after that, we have to prepare a package for KDHE, for the loan, that includes all of the finalized contract documents. And we'll set up a pre-con meeting that will establish the notice to proceed date. That'll all happen pretty quickly, as long as we get things back from everyone pretty quick. But then the contract documents have a substantial completion date of 300 calendar days from that.
How many?
300. So they will start occurring, you will start getting liquidated damages past that 300 days. And that 300 days is from that date we'll set at the pre-construction meeting, so.
Did you break your completion days, since there's different components? Did you break it into completion of the different phases so that the start of service entrance upgrade doesn't get dragged out 300 days or is it just a blanket 300 days?
That's for the entire contracted scope of work.
Okay.
Everything has to be done within those 300 days.
Well, I will say the way it is phased, they're going to have to have that new service entrance again before they can start switching over to the new MCC because part of the contract is they have to keep us in operation while they're doing it. So it's all sequenced where they really can't drag out something like that.
And the plans include a construct, general construction sequence, but the contractor has to submit a detailed sequence for our review before starting construction. So that'll be coming, we don't know exactly the timeframe and order in which they're going to complete things, so.
Sometimes with multiple components, as part of the bidding package, you'll identify sequence or time schedules for each component. 300 days is quite a while to look at the scope of work. I guess some of it, though, the control systems are more job-assembled than factory, package, plug-in-and-go, isn't it?
Yeah, that includes the order, the delay and delivery of the equipment, so they'll have some time where they're just kind of twiddling their fingers, waiting for stuff to come in there, yeah.
I don't, personally, I don't think it'll take 300 days.
Because the contract administration part of PEC's contract doesn't allow for 300 days of engineering services and.
Yeah, that's just the maximum they can go before they have to start paying you for delays, so it shouldn't take that long.
Yeah, just so that we're clear, we're not going to look at an extension for engineering services.
Yeah, and that's also what those liquidated damages cover, too, so that you shouldn't be held accountable for that if that happens.
Most, all this is interior, so weather delays shouldn't be applicable, should it?
Well, it runs to your outer buildings. There's some trenching and groundwork, there's.
Pretty minor?
Yeah, most of, most of it's interior.
Good. Exciting.
Yes.
So Kelly Electric, local contractor, that'll be good for service and?
Yep, I know where he lives and I know his number.
Yeah, yeah.
Money stays local and.
That's good.
We know where to find him.
That's good. Any further questions?
No, sir.
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award the Water Treatment Plant Electrical Improvement Project contract to Kelly Electric, the lowest qualified bidder per the recommendation of PEC and city staff in the amount of $1,217,557.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider awarding the bid from Nelson Fowler LLC in the amount of $22,150 for the livestock catch pens.
Hi.
Hi.
Earlier this year, we went out for a bid, bids came back. We went out for bid for fencing and all. Bids came back extremely high and we rejected those bids, didn't even bring it back to you. We went out for bid for the, basically a crowding tub and two squeeze alleys. They're two, eight foot long and the squeeze alleys, basically they're adjusting alleys. And those would accommodate animals as large as our bison and as small as our deer. Those have to be, you can't just go get those, you know, at a farm store or anything like that because our bison are so huge and it's, it's going to have to be made. And so finding people to do this has been quite difficult. And this company is the one that had the first bid and we went out for a second bid and he came back extreme, a lot lower bid. And I told him I didn't have that kind of money and he's trying to work with us because he wants us to see, get our facilities going. So right now, I'm wanting approval for a crowding tub and the two squeeze alleys. And then I have money in next year's budget and I can finish the fencing that attaches to it and finishes it all off. Right now, we have no working facilities. We have 10 bison, we have two elk, we have llamas and everything. And so right now, we have nothing to get our animals up safely, for the animals and for the employees. They've been operating that way for years and it's, it's very unsafe. And so this is an improvement. You know, we've got the livestock sheds, which are great. I don't know if you guys have seen them. We've got two of them up. We waited for the elk to go out of rut and so we're ready to put that third one up, the elk shed. So that's a good phase on, on improving our livestock area and this is a needed facility that we do need. Any questions?
What's the timeframe to build it, do you know?
30 to 60 days. And I do have pictures if you want to see that he submitted to me. It doesn't take very long.
It's a welded steel structure, I'm assuming?
Really nicely made. This is of the squeeze alleys.
That's 22,000?
Well, two, two of those alleyways. And then I don't know if you're aware of what a tub is. A tub is an area. is, a tub is an area, it's a big round area where they come in and it directs them, because animals don't wanna go, if they see something straight ahead, they won't wanna go, you won't get them in. So, this alleyway, this squeeze tub, excuse me, gets them through, and it's round, so they don't see what's right around the corner, and then that takes them into the squeeze chute, yeah.
Is the work so specialized that you only have one person able to submit a bid?
I don't know why I didn't get any more bids, I actually, I've gone to farm shows, I've talked to people, and this one gentleman down in Oklahoma, I called him and told him, and I thought for sure I'd get a bid from him, because he didn't wanna do onsite, putting it up, but he would make the equipment, 'cause I've talked to him a few years, I've been working on this for a few years. I don't know why he didn't, if he didn't have the timeframe, he may be having, already working on some and couldn't get it done within that timeframe, I didn't hear from him. So, I don't know why, but...
Did you mail out a request for bids, or any?
Yeah, I mailed out several and sent emails to several. I don't know if the timing of the year or what the deal was, but I can't tell you.
When you bid it the first time, did you get more than one bid?
No, I just got one bid, too.
Same guy.
He came down several thousand, his first, let me find it.
Based on what I just paid for a handrail in front of my store, this seems like a steal.
His first bid came out for the three units is thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. He came down sixteen thousand six oh five. So, going through this bid process saved us sixteen thousand. So, he knew that, I don't know what he was trying at first, but he came, I told him I couldn't afford that. So, and in line, I had gotten some verbal bids from this other gentleman in Oklahoma, and these fall in the same price range as he did. So, when I've got that first bid, I about fell over, you know, but this bid was very reasonable, from what I had talked to.
If they can cut sixteen thousand out of bidding the same apples-for-apples, there's only one reason why it was sixteen thousand dollars higher. They knew he was the only bidder and thought you had money.
Right. That could be an ad, I don't know, he was trying, he's...
That's a problem when we only can have one bidder that we're, you know, and this twenty-two thousand looks like he knew that we had twenty-five thousand.
I didn't tell him.
I know. But, it's a struggle nowadays to get their prices, but we need to make sure that we send out as many as we can to solicit, and
Right, right.
This is kind of a specialized field, that, you know, I haven't seen too many vendors for this type of equipment, so we're kind of...
In this area especially, you get some of them, I've found some from Nebraska and all, but by the time you have it shipped here, you add that cost, and then that goes way over, you know, budget then.
And the same of assembling, they don't wanna come here, the cost to come and stay overnight to assemble something adds up, and they look at, I'm not gonna get it, so they'll hold back a bit, but...
There is one thing I would like to ask, is if you could have an alternate of, he had to unload it, I'm not sure if I need that or not, I'm hoping maybe we can with the backhoe, Jim's backhoe, get it unloaded, but if not, I may need that assistance on that, but I'm trying to alleviate that cost, that twelve hundred and fifty dollars, but I'm not sure if I need it or not. Not sure if the backhoe can handle that. The alleyways, I have no problem, but that big tub, that's huge.
But, is the tub coming now, or is that something else?
It'll all come at once, he'll be delivering it all together.
Okay, you've got another tub you wanna add to it?
No, no, I just, down there, if you see that says
I misunderstood, yeah.
To unload, add a thousand two hundred and fifty, I don't wanna use that unless I absolutely have to, see?
Sometimes there's advantages of paying the extra, if you unload it and bend it, it's ours.
Exactly.
If he unloads it and bends, it's his.
That's true, that's true.
So, I don't know, sometimes, you hate to pay that much money to unload, but, you know, injury of a worker if we don't have the right equipment, and...
Exactly, I totally agree.
Damage our equipment, backhoe just doesn't seem to be the right equipment to unload that.
Yeah, I wonder what they use?
I don't know what he uses.
I don't know. So, what you're asking, then, is for us to approve the purchase for twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty, and also then authorize you to add to that the one thousand two hundred and fifty for unloading, if necessary?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, instead of one package, we could make the proposal for both, separate, to give you the option?
Yes, I'd like that.
And the discretion?
I'd like that.
Okay. How do you feel, Commissioner?
I think that's a good idea. I was just curious what other zoos around the immediate area do when it comes to handling...
They all have facilities, they have to have facilities. See, this facility's not only to get them up, but it is also to get, I mean, to load out if we wanna sell or whatever, but to get them up. For example, our oldest male, bison, has got some feet problem, and the only way we can treat them is to dart antibiotics into him. So, now, with this, we can bring him in, because these have all different, the slide gates have different access gates, and so, we can get him into that, one of those alleys, and then he's contained, so it's not gonna injure us or the animal, and then we can lift up the access gate at the bottom, and he can attend to their hooves and take care of them. But, we have no way of taking care of the animals, and our USDA inspector has been wanting us, you know, emphasizing that we do need to have facilities that we can take care of the animals, and right now, we don't.
So, this'll be a one central location, and you'll have runways to take the elk to this?
From all pens, yes.
And that's the next part of the project you talked about?
Right, well, right, once we get those in place, and I'll have fencing to put in, and there'll be a quarantine area on the east side of that pen, so then, if we need to quarantine an animal, it'll be away from it. So, there's a lot of things that we need to do, just in taking care of the animals, and so, that's what we wanna include in next year's budget, is get that taken care of.
Any further questions?
None.
If there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bid from Nelson Fowler LLC in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, twenty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the livestock catch pens, and have a contingency to add an additional one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars if we, to unload the pens that are coming in for delivery.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Barbara. Next item on the agenda, consider approval to amend City Code Section 2-141, Ordinance Number 4214, having to do with membership of the tree board.
I'm Leslie Fox with the Independence Tree Board, and we propose to amend the ordinance number 4214, which would give us the ability to have flexibility between five and seven members. All of our current members are important assets, and we don't want to lose any of them, but it might be nice to be able to add up to two more that might have tree-specific expertise. None of the current members have any particular tree expertise. We do have advisors, which do a good job, and also, the flexibility of being able to include people who are not specifically within city limits as members. Some of the folks in the surrounding areas around Independence have better tree expertise than we do. It's modeled after the park board and the way that their ordinance is set up. But, it wouldn't have to be changed, like, nothing, we wouldn't have to add any more members, it'd be between five and seven, there'd just be the possibility of adding more.
And up to two of them could live outside the city, so that you can...
Yeah, it's written so that the majority have to be in city limits.
That lets you bring in some tree professionals that are outside city limits, but very engaged in the city, I'm assuming?
Yes. That's our intention.
Kind of a flexible board, that's a different concept. You know, it seems like either we'll be five or seven, but when you have that, that two hanging there, is it, yeah, I wanna be on the board, but no, we don't want you, so we'll just stay five. I think it's either better to have five or have seven than to have flexibility.
Okay.
Tree expertise would definitely be beneficial. Now, on the historic resource, Commissioner, some of the positions are designated, aren't they, Kelly?
Yes, they have to have, a certain number of them have to have certain backgrounds, like a history teacher, or an architect, or a attorney, so, yes, they have to have special qualifications.
So, that's kind of what you're looking at with one or both positions?
Yes, we would like to add people who know something about trees.
That would definitely be beneficial, so...
That sounds like a good one.
Yeah, yeah. So, is the ordinance designating that requirement currently?
No.
It's just saying...
It says they're appointed by the city commissioners.
Yeah, you guys would pick them, still. We don't get to pick anybody.
So, we could appoint up to two more, the way it's written now, or we could choose not to.
But, it would still be your choice.
Oh, so now it's our fault that we don't... Okay, I get it, I get it. Yeah, yeah.
I'm getting the picture now.
Yeah, yeah.
We do not have any other boards that have a range of membership
Yeah.
that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So, you may just wanna, if they wanna add two more, you just may wanna stick with the seven.
Yeah, and then, if there aren't qualified people, then it would be open until we find someone. As an active tree board, it'd be easier to get things done with seven members than with five.
Okay. If those positions are not filled, are we, can we do anything, then, if we only have five people who are on the board, but there's seven positions?
Do what?
They need four for a quorum, but they're really an advisory board, so they don't really have any, I mean, it's not quite the same as, like, P&amp;Z or something like that.
So, they're not governed by those rules?
Well, I mean, they're advisory, they don't have any actual powers as far as, I mean, everything, they would advise you guys to do things.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's...
But, it's a little messier than that, because if it's, if they're allowed to have seven, but they only have five, then a quorum is really three, not four, because they only have five members, you know?
Well,
Maybe.
if there's supposed to be seven on the board, wouldn't the quorum be four, Dan? Even if you've got, would it still be even if you have unfilled positions? I know in P&amp;Z, it's like that.
The quorum's gonna be filled depending on the number of members on board, so if there's seven, it'd be four, if there's five, it'd be three, I guess it's flexible.
So, even if you have, if there's supposed to be seven people, but you've got two vacancies, I think your quorum would still be four, because there's supposed to be seven on the board, wouldn't it?
Put Dan on the hot seat in this first meeting.
You take the members that are officially appointed on the advisory board, and you have the majority, you have to have a quorum, so...
Officially appointed, or officially allowed to be there?
Officially appointed, so if there's two vacancies that aren't appointed, then it'd be three, you have to apply to be...
That's what I thought.
Sounds like that.
Quorum by definition is the majority of the official, the appointed members are present.
But not the positions that are available.
Not positions that are available, yeah.
I think the commission's a little...
That's how I read the statute.
Because it's got statutory in the form, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, I thought it was, like you said, just the appointed, so we could go to seven, and if we've only appointed six, then the quorum's determined by six, or if there's four.
Okay.
Okay. So, from our ordinance, what's the opinion of modifying it just to seven?
I think we should, I think it's a little wonky saying five to seven.
Yeah, let's settle on the seven, and that, you know, I'm fine with that, making it seven.
Definitely.
Okay, so the motion would reflect the modification of the ordinance that we've been given?
Yeah, Louis is gonna make the motion.
Okay.
He knows exactly how to do that.
So, we don't have any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move to approve amending City Code Section 2-141, Ordinance Number 4214, having to do with membership of the tree board, and creating a tree board consisting of seven members, who shall be appointed by the majority vote of the governing body of the city.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, do I, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. When we have vacancies, could you email the commissioners, and we can go out and try and get the word out, too?
I post those on the website and stuff, too, we're gonna have at least one vacancy on P&amp;Z coming out, too, in January, so I'm getting ready to advertise that one.
But, if you have some people in mind, Leslie, that would like to serve on the board, that have tree expertise, just let somebody know.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get somebody appointed.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Leslie, thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, city manager's comments.
I have no comments, Mayor, just...
Okay.
We have that reminder of that special meeting with the P&amp;Z on the fifteenth, I heard back from Gary, but didn't hear from the other two, and I've, all the planning commissioners have, are able to attend, so it's not gonna work for you guys.
I'm good for the fifteenth, it's at five thirty.
Okay, okay.
I'm good.
Five thirty?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that.
And...
Commissioner's comments?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I have a couple. When I'd gone back and read some of the old minutes from past meetings, they had to do with, I know Mike had, Mike Passo had talked about the drainage area on Cedar and South Pan, that had some blockage in it, and he was gonna have to set something up with the railroad, because it's on their right-of-way, to where they would have someone there to monitor the work, if, and that would be something, if we haven't done, for something to look at to do next year. I didn't know what the status of that was.
I'll check with Mike and get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure, either.
Okay, and my other, in reviewing some old minutes, the house indicated they're on Circle Drive and North Eighteenth in that Whiskey Creek flood zone area, they had talked about wanting to make sure that that drainage point that's on Circle Drive, there's two, I think they're pretty close side by side, or in the same vicinity, if those were, if those were open, and I think we had, we'd asked city staff... If, if those were, if those were open, and I think we had, we'd asked city staff, and they weren't sure whether a camera had been set down in that area to see if there was any blockage or not, so, and so I'd like to see that put on the list.
All right.
And then my other comment that I would like to make, we have some positions that we're using an express personnel or one of those companies that provide people that work for the city. And I know we've been having trouble keeping workers on the city street department. Had, had those positions initially been put on the, on the website, when those vacancies became open to hire someone on a permanent basis, or we just went directly from, they were vacant and, and went to the personnel company to fill slots?
Our past practice has been to go to express.
Okay.
To find people initially. It's kind of a, and we don't have an official probationary period policy. There hasn't been one here, I don't know how long. So that's kind of a probationary period, if we hire through express, obviously we can, if they don't work out, we can terminate them at, at any point without, you know, and due process or anything, because they're just a contract employee. But we do typically go directly to express first, and they do background checks and so forth, and all the, all those things that they take care of that for us.
And then my, my last topic that I wanted to bring up. I just had it, give me a second. Oh, yes. I wanted to thank city staff for the brush pickup in the Whiskey Creek area. I think they went and, and did a tour of the neighborhood and, and picked up some remaining brush piles that hadn't been turned in. And, and I was kind of wondering if, if there's a, a plan going into next year to where they may rethink of how that brush handling is, is going to be handled in the future, because for people that call in, they get on a list, they get picked up, I understand, but, but there is some piles that never get called in, and they end up sitting on property for five or six months, and so that doesn't play into the beautification of the city that, that we're trying to do. So I didn't know whether Mike was looking at maybe working toward maybe a system of working a quadrant and picking up everything, whether they've called in or not, in that particular area and then moving into another, another area. So you don't have brush piles that are sitting for months at a time, and then they've had to be turned in by someone else before they eventually get picked up.
Certainly, especially we want to meet some goals in beautification for the strategic plan, so we're always looking at new ways to do things. And Mike and I have talked about it in general, to see what we can do there. Just sometimes it's time and money, but.
Sure.
But we'll certainly look.
Sure.
Continue to look at that, especially in the beautification process here.
Where I worked at, they used to also come to the workforce, and if you had some ideas that would be more efficient or a better use of time, they would always come to the people that were actually out in the field doing the work. They had some suggestions or an idea that they think might work.
Sure.
Might improve the process. We always encourage people to step forward and at least, you know, have vented or vet those before the, their boss, and in this case, city manager also.
Sure.
To see if it's something that would be feasible, that, that we can move on and make some changes, so.
I agree, I agree totally. I mean, that's the background I come from is, when you talk Six Sigma or Lean Six Sigma, that's what you do, is you set up people who are doing the process in terms of reviewing it, and that's where you tap into your workforce to get good ideas. So I agree a hundred percent, that's the process.
Okay.
Definitely had that, or be part of that.
Okay, I, I think that's it, that's all I have.
Okay. So I wondered if we could add the treasures and the quarter treasure report back to the packet, give us opportunity to review and ask questions about them instead of just having them come and email as well as a sales tax report. In the past, that gave us all the chance to bring questions of where our spending's going, and any, any issues with that. We did receive notice that KDHE awarded us a loan project for the sanitary, the sewer projects, didn't we? We got a loan for the water.
Right.
And we applied for a loan for, we did get notice that we were awarded that.
I, I can't remember, I don't, I don't think, it doesn't.
That's what I was, I couldn't remember either. That's what I was wondering, the status of that application. We filed them both about the same time.
It seems like there was one extra thing that, that needed to be done and submitted to the state as part of that application process. I don't think we've gotten that back yet or anywhere. So I'll, I'll check with Sean.
Yeah, we'll check on it, see the status of that, what's, what's, if there's anything delaying it or what, but.
Yeah.
Or if it's just paperwork that's got to work through the process, but we'll check on that.
Yeah, one of the projects, I think all the engineering was done, it was ready to bid and the money, Lakeview Lift Station. We had some that we already completed engineering, because we're going to use that original four million dollar loan, but then we did.
The Lexite Lift Station, the engineering is all done, it's ready to bid. Also, the sewer line work is already engineered and ready to bid, too. So we're just waiting on money right now.
I think Waldo's included in that as well, wasn't it?
Well, we, yeah, we were going to look at some control improvements at Waldo Lift Station, too.
The what?
Waldo Lift Station, some control improvements. Wanted to look at upgrading the control panel and freshening it up. It's quite old now and starting to cause some problems for us.
It seemed like this has been maybe four years ago, five? We talked about the lift stations and some of the issues, and Lakeview was real critical at that time, and I just lost track of, with our application, I couldn't remember if we'd received notice of being awarded that loan.
Closing out the other loan, they didn't, they didn't, the state didn't want to extend or give us any more money on that other loan, because it'd been out for so long, they, they wanted to close it out, and that took some time to get that done, and then do this application. And it seems to have taken quite some time to, to where we're at now. But it should be here pretty quick.
Okay, good. Two thousand nineteen, don't we have budget three or four hundred thousand for projects? Sewer?
We have, yes, we have money budgeted to do.
There's a, there's a reserve that's set up in eighteen, which we'll, we will move that into a, a capital reserve for the Water Sewer Fund to take care of that with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar split between the water and the sewer piece of it. So those funds are available there to utilize that. I don't believe outside of getting into the work on the KDHE wastewater loan, I don't think there was any sewer project specific. I do know there's some improvements for Waldo Lift Station that were, were included in that, but I don't think that there was any just sewer line replacement in twenty nineteen.
It seemed like we had the automated meter replacement we discussed it and another budget amount.
On the water side, yeah, the water side, we had three hundred thousand allocated to start on the AMEs.
I got the two switched, yeah, that's right.
And then there's three hundred thousand dollars on the water line.
That's right.
So with the project that Terry has going on now, that was actually a twenty-seventeen project, we'll also uncover what he had for twenty-eighteen, now he'll have that going into twenty-nineteen. So there should be some very extensive project work going on the water, water mains in twenty-nineteen.
I was concerned more about the contamination of freshwater from a malfunctioning lift station, and I just forgot, you wear two hats, and I was getting the two, the clean water and the dirty water hat mixed up, but yeah. Yeah. I know that at that time, that's what the, the Lakeview Lift Station was critical, and I couldn't remember if we had received our information that we got that loan from KDHE for it.
I haven't seen anything like that. And I, and I have not received anything, and it would have come directly to me. But I, I do know, and as Terry mentioned, that, that they weren't going to do anything and approve that other one until we closed out our old one. And that, that was the one, we still had a few draws left from prior years that needed to be accomplished. That's done, that loan's closed out, so they can move forward with, with this application. But when I talked to Sean, there was something that still had to be done that they were needing, and it wasn't, as I recall, on our part, it's probably from an engineering standpoint that, that needed to be submitted, so I'll check back with him.
Okay. I know we had issues of, our reports showed mental amount of drawdown on that loan, where we had had significant amounts committed for projects, completed projects, so.
No, that was right. I, I can't remember exactly, but it was, it was in excess of six hundred thousand dollars was that final draw.
Now, when we go into the water treatment plant and I put your clean water hat on, with that loan, we're going to be able to stay on top of our drawdowns and not get behind?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We'll draw down as, as we're allowed to do so.
Okay. Okay, so we're still waiting on notification that. Special meeting Monday, December thirty-first, is that happening?
Yes, that's at ten o'clock, as we've scheduled. We'll be sending out the information tomorrow, I'll pack it, it's just a short RCA and.
Yeah, there's a couple documents, we were finishing up and we ran out of time getting here, so they'll go out first thing in the morning.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it'll, it'll have the RCA, it'll have our public hearing notice, and then it'll have the certificate of what's coming in, or what, what would be signed and then submitted to the county attorney.
Yeah, it kind of limits our time on review at the weekend of getting any, in a ten o'clock meeting, getting questions answered. So we'll look for that tomorrow then.
Well, you're, you're welcome to email me throughout the weekend, Craig, myself, if you do have any questions. There, there were very specific reasons why we're doing, making these amendments, so I, I think they'll be very self-explanatory. So it wasn't due to out-of-control spending.
Believe it or not, we don't like working on weekends either.
I, I believe it, I believe it.
Okay. Okay, those all, hey, you have no, okay. Next item would be public concerns, do we get any notices? Okay. Next item is executive session, so I'd move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one. The executive session will consist of these three commissioners and city manager for twenty minutes, so we'll resume at six fifty-five. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We're back in session, we need to extend for another fifteen minutes, I think fifteen?
I think that would cover it.
Fifteen minutes, so we'll, we would resume at, what?
Seven-ten.
Seven-ten. Have a motion?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We are back in session, there is no action from executive session. Next item on the agenda is adjournment, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.